It's May 19th, it's 4:00 PM. Start of meeting.
K-Rock Call Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco, Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina. Commissioner Isa Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Most of the chief's absent members?
Wait a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Much empresses. Pledge of allegiance and vocation?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather in friendship and as a family of citizens, leadership, and workforce once again. Help us in unity to make this a successful and effective meeting. For this, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, at this time, we're gonna call Danny Ramitas up, Chief Danny Ramitas, for a proclamation proclaiming May 22nd, 2025, as National Stop the Bleed Day.
Good evening. Danny Ramitas, EMS chief, for the record. So, first of all, I want to thank you very much for allowing us to continue this for the last four years. We've had National Stop the Bleed Day celebration. Not a celebration, but training where we can save lives over the last four years. Okay, so over the last four years, we've had this training on National Stop the Bleed Day, and it's given us the opportunity to train over a thousand people at EMS headquarters on Stop the Bleed and Hand-Sol-CPR. And so, this year, it's this Thursday, May 22nd, and we're doing it again. We're gonna have a big Stop the Bleed Day throughout the day and into the evening where we have classes, and we've partnered up with our RAC, the Regional Advisory Council, and including all the hospital systems in Idalo County and some of EMS providers that'll be coming to support us as well. With me today also is Dr. Palacio, who is the chair of the RAC and is also a trauma surgeon at McCall Medical Center.
Thank you for having us, and thank you for the City of FAR for leading the initiatives of the American College of Surgeons with the lead through the RAC, as well as the rest of the hospitals. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Ramitas, any training that we get, any education that we can get, will help save a life, so thanks for everything you guys do.
I'm gonna read the proclamation, so again, thank you for everything that you do. All this is extremely important, and you don't know how important it is until you're there. So, that's the scary part, and once you have had the training, at least you've got something to refer to. So, the proclamation says, "Whereas Stop the Bleed is a national public health campaign launched at a White House ceremony in 2015, and whereas its goal is to save lives by training people across the country how to stop traumatic bleeding, whereas excessive bleeding is a leading cause of death for those under the age of 40, and whereas the campaign is a public-private partnership led by the U.S. Department of Defense and supported by a number of organizations, including the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the Stop the Bleed Coalition, the American Red Cross, the American College of Surgeons, and the American College of Emergency Physicians, and the American Heart Association, and whereas emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the campaign is based on the lessons the Department of Defense learned in Afghanistan and Iraq on the best ways to treat traumatic injuries involving severe blood loss. And whereas, each year, the 4th Thursday of May has been proclaimed as Stop the Bleed Day by the campaign to engage the public to learn more about how to become empowered to save lives. Therefore, I, Isa Flores, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR Texas, by virtue of authority invested in me and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 22nd as Stop the Bleed Day.
Please join for a photo.
Yep.
Did you sign it?
EMS guys.
Alright, next, under item 2B, we have a proclamation proclaiming May 18th through 24th as National EMS Week.
So again, let me begin by thanking the mayor and city commission and administration for your unwavering support as we start our fourth year running EMS for the City of FAR. During EMS Week 2025, I want to extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt appreciation for the incredible service that our pre-hospital professionals provide to our community every day. Their tireless dedication, professionalism, and compassion in moments of crisis do not go unnoticed. Whether responding to emergencies at moments noticed or offering care and comfort to someone during a vulnerable time, your courage and commitment make a lasting impact. Thank you for standing in the front lines for your strength under pressure, for your unwavering mission to save lives. FAR is safer, stronger, and more resilient because of everything you do. I want to say Happy EMS Week to every one of our providers, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Thank you all for everything that you do.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of y'all and the EMS department. I think it's, the EMS service is one of the best things, you know, we've done or the, you know, in the City of FAR. I think it saved, you know, countless of lives, provided a great service to the community. Even Stop the Bleed comes from your department. I know there's a lot of education, and you're probably one of the standards for EMS services in the whole South Texas. So, congratulations to everybody. You know, Danny and your department, it's an incredible, you know, department. So, I'm very proud to have been part of that, and I know the whole city commission has been, you know, very proud of your services and what you guys have accomplished.
Thank you. It's a team. It's all of them that make us look good and do all the work every day.
Yes. So, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care in those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services fills healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas emergency medical services systems consist of first responders, EMS technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency doctors, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas members of EMS service teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, in behalf of Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez of the City of FAR, by virtue of the authority vested in him and on behalf of the City Commission, I do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through 24th as 2025 as EM, Emergency Medical Services Week. Congratulations.
Alright, next, under item 2C, we're gonna call up Luis Marine for a proclamation proclaiming May 18th through 24th, 2025, as National Public Works and Public Utilities Week. Also, Ruben Rosales.
Ruben, you too.
Oh, you didn't hear me? There he is.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Dr. Flores. So, National Public Works Week is observed is observed during the third week of the month of May to recognize the importance of public works in an organized society. The week-long observation also sheds light on the brave and essential role the public works employees play in our lives. To celebrate this achievement, Public Works Department will be hosting an event open to the public on Friday, May 23rd. Public Works plays an indispensable role in any developed society such as the great City of FAR. We couldn't be where we are without our phenomenal leadership from our mayor and commissioners to our city managers and administration. Their leadership has played a pivotal role in the development of the city. We want to thank our public works staff for all their hard work and dedication, and would like to take this time to mention some of our outstanding employees who have dedicated their careers to public works and public service. First, I would like to mention Mr. Sergio Yanas, who has been with the City of FAR for over 34 years. We also have present Mr. Robert Vela, who has completed 22 years this past year. And two of our other employees, Reyes Castro, who couldn't be with us today. He's been here with the city for 18 years. And Mr. Carlos Alazar, 15 years. I also like to mention that a big percentage of our staff members have been with the city over five years, which says a lot about our city, you know, and what it offers to all the employees. Now, I would like to give Mr., the Public Works Director the time, and I want to thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Ruben Rosales, Public Utilities Director, for the record. Yes, this is a great week. It really gives us the opportunity to kind of stand out and let the people know exactly what the hidden heroes are of the, you know, of the city. You guys don't see much of these people, and many people really don't think about us until there's no water coming out of the faucet, right? Or I can't flush a toilet. That's when we start to worry about, well, whose fix is that? Well, you're looking at these guys. And the other parts of it, like, we just had a recent storm that, you know, hit us very hard. These people right here, the ones you see in front of you are the ones that were out there day and night, all those times. And it shows just the efforts that they do and the dedication that they have for our city. So, it really, really gives us the opportunity to give them really just to, give them thanks for all the stuff that they do. And I did want to recognize my staff. You know, I have my assistant director here, Oscar De Leon. He has 15 years with the city. Jesse Trejo, he's our superintendent of operations. He's been with the city for 22 years. Javier Rodriguez, our distribution supervisor. He's got 11 years. Omaha Badillo, he's our meter reader and water specialist. He's been 17 years. Mr. Rosendo Valle, he's our wastewater treatment supervisor. He's got five years, but he's 26 years in the water and wastewater industry. Manuel Poncet, 12 years with the city. Mr. Luis Cardenas, he's our new utility manager. He's been with the city for 11 years. And Ms. Ariis Best Aldanya, she's our unspoken hero. We talk a lot about her. She does a lot for the city. She left, and I convinced her to come back. She's been now five years. She's our lab manager, and she does a phenomenal job with all of us, too. One of our staff that wasn't able to be here, she still had to stay at the office. Ms. Diana Martinez, she's been 13 years with the city. But all these people, they're crucial. They're the reason the city runs the way they do, and I'm very grateful for this team. And I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize them.
Yes, and definitely, Ruben, you're correct. You guys are the hidden heroes. You all don't get the recognition you deserve. So, it's an honor for me to be able to read this proclamation because you guys are the ones during the storms, during all the festivals that we have, and I know we have a lot of them. So, you guys do a lot of that setting up, helping, parks and rec, doing all that. You know, it's just a really good united front that you guys bring in together. I know Public Works and Public Utility work very, very good together. They work hand in hand because basically you are. You guys are out there every day, on the streets, taking care of the stuff that nobody else wants to take care of. So, I want to thank you very, very much, and on behalf of the commission, recognize you all that you're doing a tremendous job, and you're second to none. No other city can say what we have at all. So, thank you very much. Whereas Public Works and Public Utilities professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and public health, high quality of life and being, and well-being of the people of the City of FAR. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees of all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of FAR to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. And whereas, we urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advance equality of life for all. Now, therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, by the virtue of authority vested in him and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2025, as National Public Works and Public Utilities Week. Thank you.
Please join for a photo. Anybody for public testimony? Public hearings?
No, sir.
Alright, at this time, we're gonna call our IT director, Jose Peña, up. We have some very special guests with us from PSJA ISD who are graduating from the Methodist Healthcare Ministry's grant internship program.
Alright. Good afternoon, city manager, city commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be able to recognize here our amazing PSJA students. We do have an internship program through the Methodist Healthcare Ministry's foundation that provided us a grant since last year. This year, we're able to grow the internship program. They are paid interns, up to 15. And today, we want to recognize that 10 of these individuals have, are just about to graduate from PSJA, but they also were part of the cybersecurity certificate program with South Texas College. So, I have here Ms. Belinda Vargas from PSJA, and can mention a few more words on the program.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners and the city manager so much for being partners with us. We've been partners for a long time with the EDC, with the Greater FAR Chamber, with the Police Department, with 911 Dispatch, and now newly with the IT Department. We really enjoy working with the community. Our students benefit so much. They not only learn teamwork, but they learned how to work with each other from different schools. They're all from different schools, and they've learned that we're PSJA ISD, and that FAR is a big part of us. So, just thank you so much for all that you do for us. And Ms. Mariah and Mr. Jose, and of course, Ms. Peña, thank you so much for putting up with us. You know, we were new at this, and now we've had two years of experience. And looking forward, the night before last, I had some students texting me, "Ms., I can't do the application." And I said, "I know it's hard, okay, but let's just, let's just work on it." So, we already have four that have already applied. We have four more that are working on it. So, hopefully, we'll have eight new seniors, and I'm looking for two more so we can have 10 more to replace our wonderful students here.
And you want to introduce the rest of the team?
Yes. I want to introduce our director, Ms. Adriana Garcia, and also our teacher, Mr. Frank Martinez. One of the principals, Dr. Rowdy Vela. Her assistant, Ms. Norma Rocha. Ms. Diaz from PSJA North. And Ms. Ana Villarreal from PSJA TSTEM. We are missing one from Memorial. And also, I'd like to say that we have one student that has, I guess, yeah, we're missing one student. But there's one student, Hector, I believe, that has like 800 and some hours. So, these students work very hard because it's a dual credit. So, they've got their high school that they've got to do, and they've got also their dual credit. So, this is a big accomplishment. And so, it's Miguel Hector Arriaga, 863 hours. And then Josué Serna, 786. Can you please stand? PSJA and PSJA Memorial. We also have Miguel Mendez at 807. Thank you so much.
Alright, so, we have their certificates. So, they were trained as digital navigators. They also were trained, as you know, we're having digital literacy courses. So, they all went through the same program that our citizens come and take. And now, I'm gonna present them with their certificates and a nice gift as part of the program recognition, so.
Jose, before you do that, Cindy, do you want to say a few words?
Cynthia Garza Reyes, Assistant City Manager, for the record. I just want to say how proud we are on behalf of the mayor and the commission and city management. Commission, this was an idea four, five years ago when we started our broadband project. And the goal of the commission for this project was that we not only provided broadband for our residents, but that we created an educational pathway for our students to give back to the community and potentially come work for the City of FAR. So, what you're seeing with this cohort, it's the first of its kind. It's a model for not only our region, but for our state, and also on a national platform as well. So, students, we commend you all. We are so excited to see you all graduate, and just know that you are a part of history. So, congratulations.
Alright, so, I guess as I call your names, if y'all could come up, and then we can line you up here in the front. Mr. Diego Naranco. There you go. Orlando Robles. And I do want to make a comment. Mr. Orlando actually applied for a job and is starting in June full-time here with us as a help desk specialist. Mr. Miguel Mendez. Mr. Miguel Áviles. Mr. Jose Cantú. Mr. Gavin Trevino. Mr. Hector Arriaga. Mr. Damian Rivera. And Mr. Jesús Serna. Alright, so, I guess we can, and now, as part of our digital navigator courses, they also get brand-new laptops. Congrats. Alright. Awesome. So, I guess.
Jose, can you join up here with everyone for a photo with the commission?
Thank you.
I just want to make another quick comment. We do have cake and drinks here if anybody wants to join us after the meeting in the mezzanine.
Alright, at this time, I'd like to call our human resource director, Veronica Ramírez, to the front. Mayor Pro Tem, commission, today, we're gonna honor our human resource director, Veronica Ramírez, for receiving the Professional of the Year Award of Distinction. This award was presented at the Texas Municipal Human Resource Conference on May 7th in San Antonio, where HR professionals and community leaders gathered to celebrate excellence in human resources. One of the standout projects that was achieved by Veronica Ramírez as a Director of Human Resources for the City of FAR Resources for the city of FAR was the HR On Your Turf Program. It was designed to bridge the gap between the HR Department and employees across various levels of the organization. The Human Resource Director Professional of the Year of Distinction is an annual recognition that celebrates HR leaders who demonstrate excellence in their field and have made significant contributions to their organizations. Vettel, we're extremely proud of you. Thank you for all that you do for our organization, and this was an award that was well-deserved. So big round of applause for Vettel.
Thank you. I'm very humbled to receive this award. It was unexpected. I come to work every day because I love it. I love who I work with. And it's because of that, right? This is just a little extra. This is a reflection of the people that I work with. My team, they are phenomenal. They are the best team I have ever had. We work very well together, and they're very willing, you know, to go that extra step. The leadership that supports us and, you know, helps us, you know, work through our day and, you know, meet the goals that, that, that we set. The Commission, which allows us, and, and I'll say it, right? Because it, it's, it's my experience here, right? The budget here for our employees is absolutely phenomenal. Like, I can't even tell you how good it is for our employees that we're able to, as an HR Department, do programs. You know, many, I have coworker, colleagues in, in this field, and for some of them, it's difficult because they don't have, you know, a budget to be able to bring events for employees. And I don't have that complaint. It's easy. It's easy to do when you have that type of support system in every way, right? And so I just want to say, for me, right now, this is a reflection of my HR team, of the leadership here. This is a reflection of you, of the people that have put a little, you know, grain of salt in me, because I learn from all those people that are around me. And so this is not me. This is a result of all of those individuals that put the same effort into making events flourish, right? And so I have to say that, for me, the most important thing is, I know how to lead, I know when to lead, but most importantly, I know when to follow. And I think that's the most important thing, is knowing when to follow, no matter what position you hold. And that, to me, is most important. And that, I think, is what has allowed me to be, you know, who I am and successful in what I do. And so I want to thank Hilda Ashley, who I think had part in putting this nomination together. Very, very surprised. And, and once again, you know, the HR team, our leadership here. Thank you all very much. I'm honored.
Congratulations. You want to join for a photo? Next, we're going to call up the following Directors. Abel Molina from Special Events. Maria Langel, our City Engineer. Imelda Perez, our City Clerk. Our Chamber Director, CJ Sanchez. Elizabeth Diaz, our Grant Director. And Assistant City Manager, Hilda Pedraza. Mayor Pro Tem Commission, these individuals are recent graduates of the Texas Municipal League Leadership Academy. It was a four-day program spanned over two different series of events in Round Rock, Texas. And they were able to network and learn from various leaders around the state of Texas that joined them. And, and they're going to tell you a little bit about their experience. But again, in our investment in the leadership and development of our team, we want to thank them for going through this program. It's, it's an honor to be a part of that program, and, and I'm sure they learned a lot of good things that will allow them to come back here and serve our community more efficiently and effectively. If you all want to chime in on your experience?
Hilda Pedraza, your Assistant City Manager. Yes, we, first of all, we want to thank our, our City Manager and, and of course, our City Mayor and City Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to attend this type of conferences. We learned so much, not only personally, but also professionally. And we, like Mr. Dr. Flores said, we will apply those skills learned to our day, daily work. And thank you so much.
Thank you. Kimberly Mendos, the Director of Development Services. It was truly a great experience for me and for the group. We learned a lot about our personal, our individual leadership styles, also the importance of the leadership behaviors, and how important communication and mentorship and empowerment is. It was very interactive, and we learned, we did some team building and even practiced some negotiation skills. Thank you very much.
Imelda, City Clerk. I just want to be, I just want to say thank you. I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I've been selected to attend the Leadership Series. And we did a lot of collaboration and networking, so it was, it was really good amongst everything that was, you know, shown to us.
CJ Sanchez, President for the Chamber. Again, just thank you so much for the opportunity. I think one of the main things I took away from this was being grateful for the fact that I'm employed here with the city of FAR and the opportunities that you all provide for us to grow as Directors and as individuals. And of course, getting to share that experience with our colleagues and be able to learn our leadership styles amongst, you know, individually, but how we all work together, I think was a really good opportunity and eye-opener for us to bring back and to spread to our, our employees, but also to our fellow Directors. So that kind of growth mindset and that is being instilled in us is something that I'm very grateful for. So I was, I had time to reflect on that during this process and grateful for, for the opportunity. So thank you.
The TML Leadership Academy is a great program that TML puts together. Thank you all for, for letting me go on that, that, that academy. Like everyone has said, it was, we learned a lot. I personally liked the negotiation class that we had, and the, and the practice, the, the scenarios we, we had with that. So that was really eye-opening, and it was great to, not negotiate, it was great to, to talk to other, others from other cities here in the state of Texas and see how, how it is in their cities. So I recommend it to, to everybody else who can go, and thank you all for, for allowing me the opportunity to attend with these wonderful people.
Certainly. Elizabeth Diaz here, Director of Grants. I'm probably the newest Director amongst the group, so I really do thank you for the investment. I do want to say that working for the city of FAR shows and shines in these settings with multiple leaders from across the state. Not only did we sit front row, but we also gained some kudo points because we did an exercise that our leadership actually contributes at the cohort. It's the SHIP activity. Yes, so they were surprised at how well we executed as a team. So just so you know, we're doing something well at the city of FAR, so thank you.
Thank you guys very much for enduring that program and going through it and being a part of it, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to say something, just really quick. Leadership, it's, it's a difficult thing to do. I mean, and then you start talking about the different types of leadership, and when you're in those positions, you've got to be ready just about for anything. And we are so happy that you've gained from this opportunity. And it's just, I also think that it's great that, that one of our goals is to grow our own people, right? To provide you opportunities so that you, that you grow professionally, which also helps everybody else in between. It helps our citizens because we've got, we've got it together to help in times of difficult times, or even in times of celebration. And so I want to thank you for taking the time to learn and taking it to heart, and then now implementing it. Thanks.
I want to say that one of the things I heard many of you say was that you all learned that there are different types of leadership. And the best thing is that you understand that each one of you can lead differently. And that's very important because sometimes we're stuck to only one way of leadership, and we don't open our minds or minds to something different. But just the way you all learn something, we do expect you guys go have lunch with other Directors that they went and share your experiences with them. Thank you.
Thank, I just to really, you know, restate what, you know, the other two Commissioners said, it's, it's important to realize that we, all of us, all of y'all, Department Heads, you know, whatever position you're in, you are leaders. You know, it's interesting to realize that you don't know your leaders, so you really start looking back and learning about leadership. You know, whether it's in your personal life, you have friends that you direct, or in your own work. And people look up to you, people respect you, and you don't understand the importance or the power that you have to influence other people. And, and that influence is a tool that should always be used for the benefit and the good of others. And learning how to lead is one of the most difficult things to do, because you have to learn how to make people understand and follow you. That's one of the hardest things that you can do, is people to follow you. You have to build trust, confidence, and a, and a, and a vision that they want to follow. And I really, you have a City Manager who, you know, is obviously a very good leader. And I think learning by example is one of the things that you should always strive for. So if people want to be like you, that means you're doing something very well. And I think it's a culture in the city of FAR that has been changing. I think every, just by the fact that we won state awards everywhere, people are taking notice, and I think you should take notice of the great job you're doing. And every time you do something good, it's a benefit for others and yourselves. And so congratulations, it's a great thing. Some people never learn, and you guys are learning, and it'll help you in your future and your careers. So congratulations.
Ditto. Please join the Commission up here for a photo. All right, next, we have Yudi with our City Events of Interest.
It's a lot, so hang on. Yudi Gonzalez with the Office of City Communications. Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Commission, and of course, our City Manager. Three brief recaps of three very successful events we recently had here in the great city of FAR. We'll start with the Mother's Day event. This took place at our DRC, and of course, wonderful event.
Tonight's event is Night Under Stars, where we listen to some wonderful music, and we celebrate some very special community members. We're here tonight to celebrate the wisdom, joy, beauty, and strength of those that we hold most dear to us, and that is our mothers.
So tonight, we treat them on with some complimentary wine, charcuterie boards, and of course, those roses that were handed out by our Monarch Patrol Officers.
It's a really unique one, because of course, we all love mom. And just to give something back to them from all the love they give us, it's just something for them to feel appreciated and more than loved.
The energy here, it was amazing. The whole event, it was amazing.
Actually, yes, when they were singing some of the songs related for mothers, it, it really hit my heart, and it, I got the tear out, because I wish my mother could be here, but she's currently not here locally, but it was beautiful.
And once again, this is a Mother's Day event that is Night Under a Star, so it's a traveling event from DRC to City Hall to the FAR ONE Amphitheater in the French Garden. So it's, it's moving around every year. Our next recap is the Warrior Race that took place at our FARN auditorium. We have a recap of that as well.
Anybody that wants to challenge and wants to see kind of what they're, what they're, you know, made of, they want a challenging event, yeah, come out here, do it, and have some fun, bring the family. You know, it's a fun event, they can watch you, and yeah, just do it, man, get out of here.
Definitely, I would recommend it 100%. It's for everybody, I mean, not only for the city of FAR residents, but also anybody in the state of Texas, even in the nation, who want to come and join us and become a warrior.
Really, it's just to keep moving. Just stay fit, stay active. I got kids that are in high school, and I feel like I'm breaking down a little bit, so I figured if I just keep moving, hopefully slows down that process. I mean, come out and join, it's, it's fun, it's different, and you'll never know where you're at until you push yourself. There's one athlete there, too.
You hope to play good, you want to play good. I think we played pretty good tonight.
And there was different winners on different categories, first, second, and third, of course, male and female, so great event. And our third recap is the Police Department Memorial Ceremony that recently took place at our EMS Headquarters.
Today, we're here to honor those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to their families. Our commitment is that your loved ones will never be forgotten. For our last call, FAR Police Department Sergeant J. O. Osorio Luis Garcia, end of watch, August 9, 2013.
Every year, we have a police memorial ceremony, like the one we had today. It's to honor fallen officers who have lost their life while in the line of duty.
It is, I think, the ultimate sacrifice that these officers make when they place themselves in danger on a daily basis.
This is a time when law enforcement agencies come together. It could be local, state, federal, we're all one family. And it's a time where we also give thanks to everyone who continues to serve for the betterment of our communities.
We continue to honor them and their legacy, and to their families, our commitment to them is that they will never be forgotten.
We wouldn't have the safe society that we take for granted almost daily. So my message to them is, more than anything else, thank you so much for your service.
And that was Veronica Ramírez, our HR Director, wrapping up with a beautiful, amazing grace. Moving on to the Events of Interest, everyone should have a packet in front of you. The first event is happening this Wednesday. It's actually the Hurricane Preparedness Event. This is where we invite our community to come and ask Directors questions on what we're doing to prepare for hurricane season that starts June the 1st. We want to show them that we're active, we want to show them that we have, you know, different protocols in place. And this is a pre-event, it's happening this Wednesday at our DRC from 69. We're really encouraging residents to scan the QR code on the flyer that's currently on social media, because everyone that scans that media, because everyone that scans that QR code and registers will have the opportunity to win a generator this Wednesday. We have a meteorologist, Tim Smith, who will also be there to, of course, talk about hurricane preparedness, weather, and to be the moderator as well. So, once again, free event, Hurricane Preparedness at the DRC, which is a Development Research Center in South FAR. Our next event, as Danny mentioned, Stop the Bleed, National Stop the Bleed Day. This is to celebrate, of course, that week. So, he's hosting Stop the Bleed Day. This is an event happening May 22nd. And there's five classes where residents can register. The first one kicking off at 8:30 in the morning. These classes are meant to, you know, teach people how to save alive, how to use a tourniquet properly, CPR, and we'll also have a blood drive happening on-site. So, once again, we're encouraging our residents to register for both, not only the blood drive, but for these classes. There's five classes. You can see those times on this flyer. And there's a photo of Dr. Caballero and Mrs. Mari there. Public Weeks, actually, Public Works Week kicked off this Monday. So, we have multiple events. You don't have this flyer in your packet, but we do have it up on the screen. So, these events will be happening all week. So, starting today, our residents were able to come to City Hall from 9 to noon to meet some of the staff that work under Public Works, of course. So, today, we started off with a Streets Department, moving on to recycling, traffic, and stormwater. Every day from 9 to noon, our residents can come out, talk to them. You know, if there's questions, suggestions, concerns, they have that one-on-one interaction in City Hall. On Friday, it's the wrap-up of the week, and so, we have a celebration for everyone in our community. And this is happening from 9:00 AM to noon. So, Public Works collaborates with our school districts. So, these children come to our facilities. They're shuttled in a bus, of course, and they get to tour every single station that makes up Public Works. But again, this is not only open for school districts. Anybody can join us. This Friday, we'll have music, cake, entertainment prizes. And once again, this is to celebrate Public Works Week. The next event is Beautify FAR. This event is also spearheaded under Public Works. This is happening May 31st from 8 to noon at Memorial Park. Memorial Park is the drop-off station. This is where the roll-offs will be located. But a group of volunteers and team members for Keep FAR Beautiful and Public Works will be walking and cleaning some of the areas. The focus will be central alleys, and they will be working their way east to west, from Cage to North Flag and West State Street to West Bell. And again, it's very similar to a trash bash, but we're incorporating the component of having the volunteers going out to the alleys cleaning. So, again, it's a Beautify FAR to make sure our community's involved and we're keeping our streets and alleys in good shape. Our next event is Memorial Day Ceremony. This is happening Monday, May 26th from 9:00 AM at our Memorial Park. It happens every year. It's a brief event, but of course, this is a tradition we've been having here in the City of FAR every year. So, we really encourage our community to join us. Free event. And after that, we usually place flags throughout the cemetery in the park. Very nice event. We really encourage you to join us. The last flyer is Budget Priorities Citizen Survey. This has been up for a couple of weeks now, if not months, on our social media platforms and our city website. This is just, again, a reminder for residents to scan this QR code and take a brief budget survey. It's about two minutes long. This data really helps our commission, our mayor, our Finance Department, everybody, our leaders, really understand our community and our residents and their needs. So, once again, this flyer is up online. And this concludes our City Managers' Events of Interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Yudi. All right, next, we have Item 6, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the governing body and won't be enacted by one motion.
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Under Item 7A, Consideration in Action If Any on Resolution Suspending the June 24th, 2025 Effective Date of Proposal by Texas Gas Service Company for interim rate adjustment for cities within Rowgram Valley service area.
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 7B, Consideration in Action If Any on Resolution Appointing a Mayor Pro Tem and Alternate Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Pacheco as Mayor Pro Tem and Danny Chavez as Alternate Mayor Pro Tem.
I reject the alternate, but you can choose somebody else.
Oh. Itza.
Do I have a second?
Okay. Second.
All right. Others in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 8A, Consideration in Action If Any on the Purchase of a Yale GP155VX Forklift Truck for the Public Works Department from Briggs Equipment from FAR Texas for the amount of $125,893.20.
So moved. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 9A, Consideration in Action If Any on Change Order Number Two and the Addition of 15 Calendar Days to the FAR Reynosa International Bridge Expansion.
So moved. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Item 9B, Consideration in Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into a Service Contract for Construction Management Services for the FAR Event Center Improvements with Brownstone Consultants from McAllen, Texas through TIPS Cooperative Contract Number
So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
9C, Consideration in Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into a Professional Service Contract for Design Services for the FAR Event Center Improvement Project with the Waring Group from McAllen, Texas.
So moved. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thanks.